I'll call the work session into order and we'll get started with number one, which is the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program.
Good afternoon, excuse me, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Got a handout, just sort of give that to the please? So, the purpose of me coming today, I just wanted to give you all a brief update. Really appreciate the City of Fairhope support, been a strong supporter of Mobile Bay National Estuary Program for a long time now. Probably the most pressing project, I think, that would be of concern to the folks in Fairhope is our Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan. It's for the eastern shore watershed, the map in that document I gave you will give you a little bit detail about what all has been going on. That's being led by Thompson Engineering and it's a large watershed, basically covers parts of the city of Daphne, city of Fairhope, basically all the way down to Barnwell, a large portion of the eastern shore along the coast of Mobile Bay. And we've been working on this for a couple, really a couple of years now, got started right, right in the height of COVID, which really delayed progress unfortunately, but kind of the point now where we're starting to wrap it up. Expect to have that plan out for public comment probably by March of this year. And what we've really found through that whole process, and we've had a lot of community input through the whole several years now we've been doing this, is basically a lot of the issues that y'all probably are already aware of, so those critical issues, obviously Mobile and Baldwin County are growing, Baldwin County specifically and along the eastern shore here, we're seeing a tremendous amount of growth and with that growth, which we all would want to encourage, it comes with challenges too. So, one of those recommendations is looking for ways that we can encourage development that's responsible and not going to put undue pressure on the resources of all the municipal municipalities here along the eastern shore and the county itself as that relates to storm water, sewer wastewater, infrastructure, all those kinds of things. So, we're looking for, for ways to encourage responsible and sustainable development all across coastal Alabama through this process. Water quality is one of the big things that we hear from, from a lot of the folks here are very concerned about, a lot of sedimentation and erosion, a lot of that is due to development. But specifically, a lot of the tributaries that flow into Mobile Bay, Fly Creek, Rock Creek, a lot of the gullies that are associated with these tributaries have shown signs of deterioration. We did a baseline assessment, Marlin Cook formerly of Geological Survey of Alabama, looked at a lot of the streams here, looking for impacts and sources, so that's helped guide this watershed plan. So, one of those assessments is looking at ways that we can better manage storm water and do a more comprehensive, I think, assessment of the streams and gullies, looking for ways to work with City of Fairhope County to address some of the challenges related to stream, erosion, and the sedimentation that comes along with it. I know there are several projects the county's working on right now, we've worked with Daphne on several similar projects and had, had a lot of conversations here in the city, worked with Kim Burmeister and a lot of the folks here, trying to assess local streams and coming up with a suite of potential projects that we can go back out and find funding for. I know Fly Creek where it comes underneath the highway has been an issue, ALDOT's been trying to address that with emergency repairs. We're looking for a more, I guess, comprehensive way to manage it long-term, that's going to be probably a big project that comes out of this, so look for, for more of those when that plan is released. Shoreline erosion with the amount of shoreline that we have along this watershed is a big, big issue, challenging for a lot of folks, so looking for ways to work with private property owners, encourage more sustainable shoreline stability practices through living shorelines and other projects. The NEP recently was awarded a grant through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, so we're going to look to do some comprehensive shoreline planning across both Mobile and Baldwin County and looking for ways to more comprehensively manage shoreline across coastal Alabama. So, there will be some opportunities through the infrastructure bill that was passed in the last year, we're receiving some funding through that and looking for ways to work with homeowners and set up like a cost share program, ways to kind of do more sustainable practices for shoreline stabilization. So, that'll be another thing that comes out of this plan. Litter is another thing that seems to be ubiquitous across coastal Alabama, so working on litter management, trash abatement, access is another big thing, looking for ways to provide more access to coastal resources. There's fundings obviously through, through the state, ADCNR too, to help make that happen. And then habitat loss, looking for priority areas where we can conserve habitat that still remains, this is, you know, beneficial, these also often coincide with access opportunities like with the Triangle Property here in Fairhope. So, looking for other opportunities like that where we can conserve habitat, hopefully improve storm water and reduce downstream impacts. These are some, just some general kind of projects. It's kind of broken down a little bit here, we have high priorities and low priorities over these planning processes or the implementation tends to drag out five to 10 years, it's kind of the, I guess, the planning window for a lot of recommendations that are coming out from this, but we've been very successful working with other municipalities in both counties on getting funding to address the recommendations that come out of these plans. So, once this plan is, is fully complete, we would come back to y'all, ask you hopefully to pass a resolution to support, basically just acknowledging that this plan exists and it's a way to, to move forward with improving the natural resources, water quality, and other things people care about here in coastal Alabama. So, look for that coming in the next, like I said, next couple of months, we'll make sure everybody's aware of it. Once it is out for public comments, goes out for like a 30-day comment period and then it is, at that point, we'll address any comments and may have come back in and then look to totally finalize that plan and get, get busy getting those projects underway. So, that's kind of, in a nutshell, where that, that watershed planning effort is. The other thing probably to make y'all aware of, the NEP is, is working, what we do is we've got a comprehensive conservation management plan, we have to go through basically an update every five years of that planning process, so we're going to be coming back to y'all, asking for your engagement and involvement through that. It's a good way to get a lot of the city's priorities basically laid out in a federally approved plan and then that opens up avenues for funding for a lot of, a lot of issues that be that wastewater or stormwater infrastructure, access, a lot of the things we mentioned in this watershed planning effort. So, those are two big things to be aware of and we'll, we'll be back at you when we have more information, but that's going to be coming this year as well. So, those are probably the two big top priority things for, for y'all to be aware of. Again, I'm happy, my name's Christian Miller, the Public Sector Engagement Program Lead with the NEP. Anytime y'all have any questions, feel free to reach back out to us, be happy to answer and provide any assistance we can. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Counsel, any, any questions?
Yeah, Christian, thanks for being here, I have a quick question. You mentioned the National Fish and Wildlife Service grants, are they, those only to be used with the private landowners? The reason I ask the question is the erosion that we've had down near the boat ramp and there's been a, you know, a more extensive plan to maybe ease that erosion, had been proposed over the years and we've never really taken it up. I think since I've been on the council, we've gone in and repaired that beach a couple of times, would that be something that we could talk to?
Yeah, it would definitely be, and I mean, there's, there's different pots of money based on, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation money is not specific generally to public or private lands. A lot of, like, Daphne and Spanish Ford have come to work with us basically just because we're, we're able to go work on private property owners a lot easier than, than a municipal government would be reticent to do so for, for obvious reasons of putting public funding back out on a private property owner, but there's, there's going to be a lot of opportunities, I think, is, is the main thing. I mean, everybody's kind of been working off the BP spill-related pots, which are starting to dry up now, but this, this infrastructure funding that, that's just come through, it's going to have a lot of these same opportunities because it spells out a lot of the same priorities related to resilience, to shoreline erosion, storm impacts, things of that nature, so we'll have a good, a lot of opportunities coming up with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Nothing else, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I've got some, some of our latest newsletters, I'm going to leave here, anybody's help themselves.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, counsel, moving on in the work session, item number two is custodial services.
Good evening, I'm going to kind of be the number guy and then I'm going to let George maybe discuss a little bit the operational side since unfortunately, the Assistant Public Work Director has always been the one that's dealt with the day-to-day operations concerning custodial services in the city. Just to kind of give you a preamble and history, a few years back, we were, had historically handled custodial operations through part-time help only. These were, you know, less than 20 hours a week employees that were not benefit employees and most of them, it was a secondary or third job to, to that. And I will tell you that we got to a point that at any given time, we, we had three openings in part-time custodians, we just could not keep folks, it was a high turnover and, and a lot of inconsistency there. And, and we, we looked at what other folks had done and we came to y'all and it looked like it was a, you know, kind of a, a revenue neutral kind of option to go out and outsource custodial services and we did do that. And, and just to kind of give you a, a little clarification, when we talk about the custodial services, we're talking about this complex that we're in, we're talking about Public Works, Public Utility, and all of the remote locations, i.e. the, the, the gas departments, bathrooms, the Public Works, remote bathrooms, electric, et cetera, including the mechanical maintenance across the street. And then we did have to pick up when Symbol Clinic opened, since we are the landlords, to pick up custodial there. And now with planning and zoning moving into their new suite, we've got to ultimately address that. So, where are we at today? We have a custodial contract and I think, I'll probably get some amens from the crowd behind me, our quality of service didn't, did not improve, if not, we may have regressed, meaning that, that we've just not been able to get the level of a service that, that we really anticipated getting and our facilities are not any cleaner today than they were when we were struggling to keep part-time employees. To kind of give you an idea of what the, the numbers, right now, the original contract for, for all those outside of the Pecan Building was, was $6,625 a month. When we added Symbol, that added $1,100 to that bill and that was roughly 3,500 square feet of finished space that had to be cleaned and the planning and zoning suite is another 3,500 square feet, so we can expect that number to be similar, which is going to put us at a, a monthly cost of $8,825 a month, which works out to be $105,900 a year, okay? So, that, that's where we are with a service that we're not happy with and we, we are to the point of discussing terminating the contract and coming to you to terminate that, but, but if we terminate it, what do we do next? That's before we cut off our, our, our nose despite our face, we want to make sure we cover our bases. So, part of what we sat down and discussed with the mayor is that, that the challenge with part-times was that there was no vestment in, in their job, meaning that it was a secondary or, or even a third level job that they were, they were feeling to make some extra money and thus, when something better or something came along, that person didn't have much loyalty or any connection to us. And, and we discussed with the mayor that, that, okay, what would, if we, if we had full-time employees that, that were full city employees with full benefits that worked for us 40 hours a week, you know, what would it take to have custodians, what would that cost be to do that? So, what, what we are proposing to you to consider at a future meeting is that if we terminate this contract, to look at bringing in and having full-time custodial staff to take care of the city's needs in that area. Right now, a custodian is a grade four employee per our pay table and our job description. That range from low is, the starting point is 11:43 an hour, the high is 21:22, so that's a range of $23,784 to 40, up to $44,139 annually, that's salary. And just so you know, our calculated average overhead for an employee is right at 49.3%, okay? So, you got to take in the benefits costs, so, so it's not just salary. So, if, if we were to look at the average employee, if, if we hired into what I call the first 25 percentile range of the pay, that means halfway between the low and midpoint, that puts that employee at about $13.50 an hour, which is a $28,080 a year annual salary. If you apply the overhead rate, that employee ranges at about $42,400 annually for, for the total all-in cost. And, you know, George and I discussed that two, we, we think we could make it work with two full-time employees, three would be nice for this one very reason, or two, two important reasons. One is PD sure would like custodial services, but that has to be a person that is certified and thus, it basically has to be an employee of the city to, to get that certified, so we could, we could pick up PD if we had our own full-time employees. The other thing is we have a long-tenured employee in Public Works that is the custodian today for passive parks and other remote locations such as the Welcome Center and things like that, and she has done a fantastic job for, for 25-plus years, but she's already eyeing when her retirement is and if, if we went ahead and planned for three full-time when that, that employee retires, and that employee does not hold a custodial position, they hold a Public Works position, but they have been in this role forever and have done a phenomenal job. They deal with all the North Beach and the Municipal Pier, the Pier Street, and those are tough bathrooms to work, I'll just tell you, especially on a Monday morning. And so, ultimately, with the goal of getting to three full-time employees, when that person retires, then that, that work would, would be under the custodial where it should belong. So, with two employees, full-time, starting at that 25 percentile rate into the depth charge, we're less cost than what we're paying today, okay? At three full-time employees, we would be probably slightly more. If we could get them in at the starting rate, it would be right at it, meaning that at the low end of the scale, the employee costs $35,510 a year and if you divide that into $106,000, that is three, multiple three. So, that, that's where we are and there is no doubt that when, you know, it's, it's twofold, when citizens come into City Hall to pay their bills or, or visit the mayor or whatever, we, we want to make sure it's clean. When you guys come in to use this, Council Chairman, we want to make sure it's clean, Civic Center, everything that goes along with that, but also, our employees do appreciate that their waste baskets get emptied and their desk gets dusted every now and then and, and at least a vacuum gets run over and we're just not getting that level of service. And, and I realize that, that that whole service industry is a challenge to hire people out there, but we thought we had a solution and it is not any better solution than we had. So, that, that's what we, we want to come talk to you about, our goal is to make sure this is as revenue neutral as possible, meaning that we're not going to spend any more money than we're already spending, but we're trying to make the operation sustainable and to give the service to not only our, our citizens who visit our facilities, but to those that have to work in them as well. And I'll be glad if George wants to, to add anything more because he deals with the day-to-day and, and it's, it's, custodial business is a tough business, I'll just tell you that.
I don't really have anything specific to add to it, but I will say that if you ask any one of the employees out here, they've actually gotten tired of emailing me and reporting the complaints to the service that we have now and it's kind of disheartening to me because it was my idea to go out and try to outsource this and I will admit, it was a fail and I'm sorry for that, but I feel like when we go back to the part-time, we'll be back in the same boat we were in because we had no weight behind it. So, if we have benefits and a reason for the person to want to feel involved with the city, then we'll get a better quality product in the end. I mean, it's, it's a, a day-to-day struggle for sure.
Sure. Well, and I, and I'll say this, I mean, I, it, I feel like this has been a struggle for some time now in this particular area and so I completely understand the idea of, you know, bringing somebody in full-time and making them an employee, benefits and all kind of giving them some skin in the game so that we have somebody that's a little more controllable, that, that can be held accountable or more accountable, I guess, if it's not to the level that we're expecting it to be. You know, I can, the, the pitfall of this is that anytime you, again, increase, increase your payroll, increase your full-time employees, I mean, before when it was part-time and it didn't work out, it was easier to say, all right, we're just going to do away with part-time or when it's contracted and it didn't work out, you can do away with contract, but if it's, if it's full-time and it didn't work out, then you're, you're terminating people, which is a little different and makes it a little harder to do. But I understand we got a problem and y'all are looking for solutions and, and I, you know, I, I get this seems like the best one you got at the time or at this time and as if, as far as it being sort of a, a revenue neutral proposal, I, I don't, I mean, I see, I see potential issues with it and what I just went through, but I mean, I think if we're, if we've got to find a service that, that suits the city and provides the service for the citizens that we need to be providing, then I think we do have to consider all these options.
Right. And I mean, it opens to suggestions too, I mean.
Sure, sure.
I mean, have we been working with this company how long now?
A year.
One year?
Yes, sir.
And were there other companies that you were vetting in this contractual process?
Yes, sir, we, I think we had three or four that...
So, you had three or four options?
Yes, sir.
Just a question, do you think any of those other three or four could do a better job and why?
To be honest with you, in the situation and the job market we're in right now, they're going to be in the same boat. Service, I don't know if I'm supposed to say, anyways, the company that we're using right now is in the same boat that we were in when we were in the part-time game. They're hiring the same part-time, they actually did hire some of our same part-time people we had and they had the same issues.
Yeah, I think, and I think that's probably going to be a recurring theme, you know, I mean, when you get, you get to a certain price point and a certain job function, you know, you're kind of, there's a same, there's a certain pool that you're pulling from and it's going to be the same and, and it's...
Right.
Another question, George, do you not think that we're going to have the same problem with attrition once we start hiring people, not even firing them, just people turning over, which costs the system more when that happens?
I mean, I would like...
I know we're talking about revenue, so let's talk about...
The few individuals that we've had work with us in the past that were on part-time, we've actually had a few that were recent that have even told us if they had more skin in the game, if they had more invested with the city, that it would be something they wanted to stay with. So, I mean, like, I feel like in that particular role, if you find individuals like that that enjoy what they do but need something back from what they're putting in, I would like to think that you can find a long-term person like we have right now doing our parks that would feel comfortable where they are and want to stay for a long time, that's, that's my goal, I mean...
Yeah, 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 I'm just, we're just talking out loud right now, I get it, yeah.
I will say that I do think the contracted company is in the same position that we were with part-time employees. They're hard to find right now, they tend to not be paid, you know, a higher wage and so they're hard to keep because they're just, you know, chasing the dollar. And, and we do have some full-time custodians who are already on staff with the city, they are long-term employees, we have one who's been here 25 years, we have another one in Parks and Rec who's been here a number of years, so I think we've proven that if, if you hire them full-time, you know, they do have some skin in the game, that they're willing to stay, they're more invested in the job. But again, I mean, this is, you know, another, another try at a different, at a different approach to this issue that we're having, the challenge that we're facing.
I have a question, when we had the part-time employees, how many part-time employees did we have?
Five, it was supposed to be five, but I very rarely actually had five employed all at the same time.
You wanted to have five in full capacity and you would have how many full-time? You want three ultimately?
Two would be what would basically be a wash right now or a little under, but three would ultimately be my goal.
How do they get in eight hours a day? Because you don't, you know, you don't want them in emptying waste baskets and dusting desks while somebody's in there trying to do their job, how do they get in eight hours a day?
Well, the idea would hopefully be, because there are several situations where it'd be beneficial to have somebody here on the clock when we're actually here working, but I would try to set it up as basically a shift work, one of them might come in early in the morning before everybody gets here and do the high-profile areas that need to be done before they get there with nobody there and then the other places would fall in the second shift during the day to where if you had an accident, a cleanup, or there are several situations, like some of our parks would be beneficial to have somebody go through them in the middle of the day when the mess is actually going on.
If somebody comes very early in the morning though, can they get eight hours in before people show up? And then they've got to stick around until noon to get in a couple more hours, I just, I'm just trying to see the logistics of that.
I mean, I, there is definitely enough work to be done at an eight-hour day, yes, sir. I mean, they, we're not getting, the facilities we have now are not getting appropriately cleaned and if somebody was to actually mop the floors like they're supposed to, like twice a week...
Like, could they clean the Civic Center during the day? I mean, I could say like, we, you know, parks that are, you know...
They clean the restrooms at the Civic Center, so, I mean, certainly, we don't have people in here all the time where they can close one restroom, they can use another restroom. So, and there are other places that have full-time custodians that I think do that, they'll, they'll close a restroom to be able to clean it and then send them to another area. I also do think what George said, as far as like the parks and stuff, most of the calls that we get start after we start our day and we don't really have anybody here other than Public Works. So, I do think it would be beneficial to have somebody here, like for the parking garage and those kind of things during the day.
And the shift in the early hours, we're asking if there's enough to make eight hours, but I, I can't remember the last time I've seen our floors actually mopped. I mean, if somebody's actually mopping and cleaning the floors appropriately and vacuuming appropriately, there's easily eight hours for two people and wee hours of the morning if you wanted to. Between the City Hall complex, the museum, all of Public Works complex and the Symbol and Planning, I mean, like this, that's a lot for...
Would they be using their, just, let's, we're talking out loud hypothetically, would they be using their own automobiles or would we, since they're moving around the city?
No, sir, I, I already have one vehicle that I could use for them right now and then there's another one that we were going to give back to GovDeals, Chevy Colorado, that if things worked out, we could possibly maybe keep it on the roster, but no, we would try to make it all where they use city vehicles, no personal stuff. Right, and if, like, the mayor just said, if you assign them to the Public Works complex, they don't need a vehicle, there's...
And they can walk over to the complex.
They can walk everywhere at the complex and pretty much every building will have its own, they won't be taking supplies from one building to another, each building, complex will have its own supplies.
It's a challenge, man, I know, I know it is, it's hard to find people, it's just really tough to find people and those cleaning services, now they're just in the same boat we are.
They are, they're in the same boat we are.
Counsel, anybody else got any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you can find a couple of people and basically be at break even, I think you ought to try it, I mean, you know, worse off than you are right now.
It just gives me, not only them skin in the game, but it gives me skin in the game to be able to give them more direction and enforce what I actually want.
Makes a difference.
Right.
I think the difference is, I ran some numbers, I think it's going to be a little bit more, but I, I think the cost was, in the scheme, I think, pretty negligible.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up, we got committee updates. Councilman Brill?
Haven't had any committee meetings since the last, they're all, they're all starting tomorrow, so next meeting, I'll have a lot of them.
Okay, Councilman Martin?
No.
Counsel McConyers?
Don't have any updates, I was going to make a recommendation about buying tickets to the Chocolate Fair for the Fairhope Library and I don't have, pulled up right now on the date on that, but, fourth, thank you. So, February 4th, Chocolate, Chocolate Fair for the Fairhope Library, great event, come out, support it. So February 4th, Chocolate, Chocolate Fair for the Fairup Library, a great event, come out, support it.
Councilman Boone, any updates?
No, nothing that went to pass, but in the future, we have a meeting with the Harbor Board Thursday on the 12th at 4:30 in the mayor's conference room.
All right, wonderful. All right, I don't have any update either, so we'll go straight into department head updates. Uh, so if you've got something, let us know, and then if you want to go ahead and discuss your agenda item, come join us. So I'll start. Kim?
It's just an update with the feds increasing their rates last month. Our operating accounts with me, working with the PNC, is three and a quarter, and our reserve is earning 375. So just want to give you an update on the rates.
It's a lot of interest. I saw some, Kim, I saw a, a five-month CD rate at four and a half, and I've seen a 13-month at four and a quarter. Just saying, pretty darn good.
All right, Richard?
Yeah, just a couple things as far as reports go. Probably the, the biggest thing that we're pushing hard on right now is, is, is moving forward and getting the contract for architecture and engineering services for the K-1 Center back to you. It's a little bit of a slow slog, but we hope, probably won't see it next meeting, but we should see it the first meeting in February. Also, as part of one of those things that we have to do is the asbestos abatement, we've got our survey back, and we're waiting a pending work plan that we will get out on the streets to get a, a contract cost to abate that asbestos in there. Uh, the good news is, it's, you know, I don't know, I, I would say that, that it's not as bad as it could have been. Uh, particularly tough product is the pipe insulation, but there's only about 350 linear feet of that that has to be addressed. But every bit of the floor tile will have to be removed as well, and, and that's, that's main floor and basement, which is a lot of square footage, but that is a non-fiable product, and it does not have to be treated as delicately as the pipe insulation. Uh, the other thing is, as you know, we are working with Thompson Engineers, the design team on the Triangle property. They've been making some pretty good gains out there, and they will probably be reporting back to the mayor and then subsequently how they decide with, with you and the mayor is to kind of give you an update of where kind of they are in the conceptual range for that Gomesa Grant project, and looking for some, some go or no-go on, on the elements and, and locations of that. So excited about, about those projects moving forward. Uh, as far as the agenda tonight, I can address item number eight. Uh, as you know, the turn lanes are moving rapidly at Gayford and US 98. Part of that, and, and just not to get too, too technical, is the approaches are gonna be overlaid with new asphalt. But looking on the west as well as part of the east side, the material that we were gonna overlay was, it really coming apart. It was breaking up, and, and it was a recommendation of the geotechnical, the project engineers, to mill that out and do a full buildup back. I will tell you, if we choose not to authorize this change order, we'll go ahead and overlay that old asphalt, and we will be back out there sometime in our near future addressing the deficiencies in that. And we have already gotten thumbs up from the NPO and a verbal from ALDOT that they will, they will be glad to adjust the, 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 the funding agreement to where the NPO covers 80% of the cost of that change order, and we would be responsible for 20. The contractor basically went on hiatus today, and I'm gonna text y'all's response at the end of the meeting, and they will act accordingly tomorrow. And, and, and that paving work will be finished this week so that they will be out of the, out of the footprint of the road, awaiting the signal material to come in, so.
Can I, can I address this, since you brought that briefing up?
Yes, sir.
If anybody wonders, it looked mighty small there, but we, we pulled out some drawings last week and looked, and everything is to the spec. I didn't know how they were gonna get a turn lane there, but it's.
I saw that today.
It's, well, I, I called Mayor, I call, and Rich, I think Mayor called Richard, and we got together and I looked at the drawings, and they're, they're to print, and, uh, Public Works went out. So if you are worried to that, I mean, I thought, how are they getting three lanes between those curves? But they are, if anybody's curious, it sounds like you may have been, Councilman Boone. But, but Richard, I wanted to bring up one more thing. We had a citizen at the last meeting, you know, bring up that concern of the, of the shoulder there on the right as you're going north. And I thought it was a pretty valid concern, if you're going north on Greeno Road, and, and, and worried about pedestrian safety there. And, and so, you know, I'd, I'd mentioned this to you also, albeit it was brief last week, and I didn't know if we could get some striping or, you know, just something there to alert the driver to the pedestrians. So if they're, if they're gonna do some striping or something like that, it would now be the time to maybe enact that. So I thought it was a pretty valid concern.
And there's no doubt, I've been working with Jennifer Ubanks with ALDOT on that very concern, about what are the options to keep folks from kind of cheating that, that paved shoulder to, to make a turn lane out of it? I haven't heard back, but they were not opposed to looking at adding either striping or markings, or even possibly looking at putting the delineators in to keep folks in the, in the proper travel lane and to make the proper right turn. So I will, I will again follow up tomorrow, but that would be, you know, ALDOT would, would be handling that because that is on their, their road, so.
Do we need to do that before, we need to wrap that up before the contractor leaves, though?
Yeah, this may be something ALDOT maintenance comes and does. They, they not, they, they would not necessarily use that contractor to do that, that would be their normal, maintenance department could do that work, so.
It'd be nice to open it up, people get a fresh start and know that that's the norm there, than to have to retrain them.
That's a bike lane right there as well.
Well, yeah, it's really, you know, ALDOT likes to call it just a paved shoulder, it's, it's multi-use but without designation, so.
Yeah, right. Is there going, is there a pedestrian signal there?
That, that is part of the signal work, yes.
There is going to be a pedestrian.
Yes, that, that is in, in the scope of work.
And the idea was, we don't want that person to step past the car and get hit by the car that thinks it's their turn lane and clip somebody, right?
That is correct, yes. And I can, I can answer and discuss number nine, this is roadway improvements to Volanta Sports Park, and, and do kind of want to give you a primer of what all this entails. This is the resurfacing of every bit of asphalt that's currently out there, that's the Sarge Turner Loop Road, which is the mug handle road that runs from both entrances on Volanta. Well, I think I'm gonna get, hopefully I won't get this wrong, the youth baseball parking lot, complete resurfacing, restriping.
Okay.
That is adding new angular parking off of Sarge Turner Road, which would be directly behind the home side grandstands of the stadium. So as you come in the easternmost entrance, there will now be new angular parking along that stretch of road. Repaving the service loop road that runs from, from basically behind the stadium up by the offices that the recreation department maintenance staff uses, and winds all the way around through the baseball parks through the back, and then comes back into the youth baseball parking lot. That will be resurfacing the road that runs down and widening the road that runs down from Sarge Turner by the high school baseball field down to behind the, uh, field house and concession stands at the north end of the stadium. Reconfiguring, resurfacing, restriping all the handicap parking there behind it. And then building a brand-new, full-width, 20-foot road that runs from there all the way by the new baseballs up the hill, between the new baseball fields and the pool complex, all the way and connecting back to the main entrance on Greeno Road, including the requisite handicap parking for the four new baseball fields. We are not doing any of the parking for the baseball fields this time, that will be, we'll probably start with gravel and then one day move up to, as well as adding, paving a service road that runs behind the rec center building. As you know, if, if you come by the skate park, there's a little road that comes in and then runs on the south side of the rec building. This would go from, from where it does that 90-degree turn and come all the way back to the new road that we're discussing so that you get complete connectivity in there. So it's just not, just some resurfacing, it is, it is additional parking. Oh, and, uh, the, for the high school baseball field, which is a gravel parking lot, we will be resurfacing only the area of, on the fence line to put in the required handicap parking there, the rest will remain gravel.
So that sounds like a lot. What's the, you know, there's not very many down weekends at that park, it's usually pretty active, so.
And we'll be starting very soon.
So what's the staging of all that, I guess?
We did a very, very short contract period, I think we have 45 days of performance in that contract, so, uh, that means that, that, because Pat keeps telling me that I gotta be able to get folks to the new ball fields by the end of February, so.
Opening day at Volanta is March 11th, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, then Pat's been lying to me, I got two more weeks.
Hey, that's opening day, practice starts a lot earlier than that.
That's saying thanks a lot, he had it all under wraps, now look at it, Pat cats out of bed.
Killed my strategy.
Richard, tough question here, with the extra paving, are we concerned about water running off and storm and this? I, I just, you know, we're adding a lot of, have we, have we done our diligence as far as my guy Christian in the Mobile Bay estuary and all of the erosion and runoff?
Yes, sir, the, the majority of the new paving, the new runoff surfaces are associated with the new ball fields. And as you know, we kind of went through a pretty intensive rebuilding of the detention pond and reconfiguring that. And that was, not only was that, that pond reconfigured to take in that water, but it also anticipates there being paved parking one day associated with those new ball fields. So actually, we, we've got a little more capacity. Really, the only new paving that we're adding, that still goes to that same area, is that, that, what, seven handicap parking spaces along the fence line as well as about 15, 16 new angle parking places, which really kind of head to the stadium, which we, we worked on that drainage there, and it goes to that same pond. So yes, I feel confident that we've, we went ahead, the pond got built first, or rebuilt first, in anticipation of all this. And we kind of decided to keep the high school baseball field gravel because it actually goes toward the west, and that's the area that we have a little problem, so.
Just a hard, another, why couldn't we do, is it more expensive just for public knowledge to do a pervious situation instead of adding impervious places as we continue to do around town?
Yes, I mean, impervious paving, if you, if done correctly, is probably about four or five times as expensive as, as traditional paving, that's just the reality. But it's a great product and, and it gives a great service, but that's just, unfortunately, this was a budgetary consideration.
And, you know, and, and I'm guessing, well, I guess I know. It sounds like we've limited what would be new pavement to only what is absolutely necessary to get the project to where it needs to be in the short term.
That is correct.
Richard, the, the handicap parking spaces that you mentioned next to the fence, those are the, just, just behind the concession stand, along the north border of the fence there?
Yes, sir.
Nothing's being paved over along, as you go down the hill and make the turn, going down, down the hill by the football field between the baseball, high school field and the football field? There's a lot of people park on that grass there.
Yeah, nothing, we're gonna, there's a road that runs down, that's gonna get resurfaced, and there's, if you know there's some uplifts or some root damage, we gotta get that fixed, but, but no. And we are, that road is an inconsistent width, so we are gonna do a little widening so it's 16 feet all the way down so two cars could pass during that game time so that when people are trying to get in and out, that we have that ability.
And you, and you've said an awful lot, so the gravel parking for the baseball, would that be graded and re-treating? There's a lot of roots out there, I don't, I don't want to kill the trees, but did you, did you mention?
We're, we're, that, we're not messing with that gravel, that is just a maintenance item for, for Parks and Recs. We're just gonna add, the, the handicaps spaces have to be a solid surface, you can't, you can't have handicap on gravel. So we're just gonna add an asphalt pad to be able to stripe off, I think at the high school baseball field, I think we're gonna net out five handicap parking spaces.
And is that area at the top of the hill gonna be parking as well where the old field was?
Front field.
The front field, yes.
Yeah, that's what Pat's goal is.
You said a lot, you know.
It'll be a gra, it'll be grass parking, it won't be paved, yes.
Great.
All right, number 10 I can address, this is, uh, uh, again, the story of rusted-out corrugated metal pipe. This is a large drain that runs between Morphe and Belangee, it's in a pretty tough spot, but we did get two bids on it, and we are recommending awarding that bid to Blade Construction. And that runs basically from the tennis center down to Belangee, and I cannot for the world to me remember what that gully system down there, when it comes out of Belangee and heads that way is called, but it, it feeds into that, so.
I think you should go back to, to nine for a second, you gave some really good answers tonight, I don't think you gave yourself enough time to, to get the applause that you deserve for having such great answers ready for some tough questions.
Well, I'm trying to get everything out of the way so we don't keep y'all from kickoff, okay?
Knock yourself out, actually, thank you.
Yes, that's a swell idea.
And then item number 11, again, that's something we have talked about a good bit. This is the professional services contracts for hydro-solution engineering to conduct the drainage study on that portion of Cowpen Creek that affects and upstream of Fairfield Subdivision. And then the chief is here, I don't want to steal his thunder, but number 12 does kind of fall under Public Works, and this is the annual inspections for our fire trucks, which we highly recommend that we do.
All right, well, you've pretty much taken all the agenda items, thank you, Richard.
All right, thank you.
Chief?
Good evening, um, just to let you know, we had, the fire department had their elections last Tuesday. The board stayed the same, which would be myself as a fire chief. David Thomas is second assistant, as first assistant, I'm sorry, first assistant chief, Dalton Combs is second assistant chief, Chris Weimberg is the secretary, and Mark Palucci as the treasurer. And just to give you an idea of, of what, uh, kind of business we're running, call-wise. For December of 2022, we had two brush fires, three structure fires, we ran 25 EMS calls, had 22 motor vehicle accidents, and 52 false or miscellaneous runs for 104 calls for December. That's about average, where we're running each month right now is around 100. For the year of 2022, the calendar year, we had 40 brush fires, brush and grass fires, 34 structure fires, six vehicle fires, 218 EMS calls, 190 motor vehicle accidents, and 727 false or miscellaneous calls, for a total of 1,215 calls for the year of 2022. Of those calls, 788 were inside the city limits, 380 were in the fire jurisdiction. We went to, we responded to Barnwell 18 times, we responded to Daphne 18 times. Went to Silver Hill six times, Fish River three, and then we went to Bell Forest and Robersdale once each. So we're a busy department for calls for service. Um, and one thing we're doing this year, we're hosting, uh, I think this is the fourth year where we've, we're hosting this. You know, the South Alabama Firefighter Hot Weekend, Hands-on Training Weekend, that'll be the weekend after Arts and Crafts, 25th and 26th. This year, we're expecting somewhere between 80 to 100, not just area firefighters, but firefighters from around the nation as well coming in to get training from nationally-known instructors, so we're hosting, we're helping to host that. So just a couple things we're doing this year, and appreciate your support and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ready?
Yep.
Never know if you're gonna start with a back and break your head or whatever, kind of guessing game.
There's no rhyme, there's no rhyme or reason to this.
So just a quick up, updating the gas department, um, the leak survey, Servy is still conducting their leak survey. As of today, or last Friday, 50 miles of main and 2,500 services. So they have about 640 more miles of main to go and about 12,000 more services to go. So for the citizens listening, they're still gonna be out there, and they're inside the city limits right now, and they'll be reaching out, so just know that that. So just know that that company is still doing our leak survey. Be aware of them, and we haven't had any issues yet. Our biggest project right now is Thomas Hospital, replacing a metering station there. So that metering station's been there since Thomas Hospital's been there. So we're updating that, and pretty big project for us. We hope to be finished Friday, maybe a little bit next week with the shutdown, but that's kind of a big thing we're working on. Agenda number 13 is ours. So this one, so about a month and a half ago, I actually had the flu, wasn't able to be here. Wes Wett was here in my place, and we ordered our cathodic protection monitoring system. There was some misprint on my end. It was a $53,800 quote, and budgeted was $72,000. So on the agenda, I had not exceed $72,000. Well, y'all voted to lower it down to $53,800, which was fine, except that did not include the monthly service for these devices. So coming back to you for, we won't have all these devices installed in the next month and a half. Some aren't even here yet, so it won't be a full year's worth of monitoring anyway. But since we put the do not exceed $53,800, that was only enough money to purchase all the devices, did not include any monitoring, monthly monitoring fees. So we are asking for the additional 5,000. We won't need the additional. We won't need all of that. Most likely, some of these won't go into effect until the next three or four months. So by the time October gets here, it is $8 a month per device, so we have 40 devices. So that's what item number 13 is.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Bobby?
Counsel? Just a couple of things. We have budgeted for a new range cart for picking up range balls. It'll be in next week. We budgeted $15,400 in our budget. It came in at, under that, so we saved a little money. On the next council meeting coming up, I believe the 23rd, we'll have a, hopefully a resolution for you to approve for our periwether lightning warning system that will be installed at Quell Creek. In the process of working with all the folks downtown, with Kim and with Aaron, to get that on the green sheet for you. But that was approved, and the budget has stayed the same, is $32,541. And that'll be a real nice addition to have. Not only will it give us sirens and warning systems for golfers, but it gives us weather and updates, lets us know how much rainfall we've had, things like that. It'll also help the superintendent and his staff out, but that'll be on the next council meeting. That's all I have. Still have a, yes, sir?
You had any, we talked about the carts. That's going to come to us sooner or later?
Yes, just because the supply and demand is running behind. Hopefully, I'll get together with some numbers on our cart fleet ahead of time, so we're not waiting a year or two years in advance to get the next fleet. I'll come to you with some information on that. Yes, sir?
Thanks, Bob.
Okay?
Thank you. Pat?
Richard stole my agenda items.
Oh, Richard.
But I'm thankful for it.
Yeah. Thank you, Pat. Eric? Hunter, I know what you got. Go back there. Corey? Jason?
We have number seven on the agenda tonight, and if it's okay with you all, I'd like to ask Mr. Starling, the engineer, to come up and explain.
Okay, yeah, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
So the request is for additional construction administration fees on the County Road 33 24-inch water main extension project. The original design on that project included 13,600 linear feet of pipe. During that process, that was extended from the County Road 33 and County Road 48 intersection down to the elevated tank near Walmart on County Road 48. So we added about 50% more to the project, about 6,200 linear feet. The additional services will include the additional time for the oversight of the project. Part of the design also included two additional directional drills, which we normally try to staff that near full-time during that process.
Counsel, any questions on this? I've heard, I've heard this, but some of you guys have not. Any questions are on, this is agenda? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Appreciate it.
You all, I don't really know where to begin on updates. Do y'all have any questions or any concerns for water and sewer?
We still got water, right?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
I certainly have a bad idea right now.
Very good.
Thanks, Counsel. Ms. Page, last but not least.
I would like to remind everybody or announce that we are going to have our State of the City event on January the 26th. Everybody mark your calendar. It'll be here at the Civic Center from 5 to 7. We'll have all the departments there represented. It's a great time to have conversation with department heads, city council members, mayor will be there. We'll have a presentation that we will livestream. We just confirmed that this morning with the IT department. So anyways, we're excited about that event again in a couple of weeks. And one thing I'm sure y'all have seen on social media, we had an issue with our billing, utility billing service. So if you happen to get a Longmont, Colorado newsletter in the mail over the weekend, we do have some city sketches available at our city facilities and online. So I know y'all were all wondering what was going on in Longmont, Colorado. However, we have, we have communicated with the folks at, at One Source, and they are going to rectify the issue and hopefully get this all straightened out, so.
I actually had somebody bring me one of those today and ask me what it was, and it took me a second. Then I explained to them there was a mistake in the, in the sendouts. But also, while you're standing up, excellent job, New Year's Eve. I was down there. It was phenomenal. City, everybody that helped, it was awesome. Police, everybody.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
And I promise I tried to make it, but I just couldn't get past 10:30.
I'm right there with you.
All right, anybody that I've missed for department updates? All right, so tell you what, we got about 30 minutes. We'll be back at, try to be back in here at 5 till 6. We'll get started on time and get out of here on time.